Well, I guess even in following up on that, if there are boats being damaged at our marina, perhaps, again, our dock master can take a look at where those boats are placed and maybe move them. Maybe there are other opportunities for them to move into different slips that, again, would not be at the end and, again, would be safer for them. So, there might be some other options. I'm sure that there are few, the boats at the end, and those of us that have been at marinas and getting sloshed around, we can appreciate, you know, not letting, wanting our boats to be damaged, but also, if you're on the boat, you know, it's not very comfortable. So, but there might be other options, and I would hope that our dock master would take a look at that.
Thank you. I would just like to speak about Paint Your Heart Out, which took place on the east side of Punta Gorda a couple Saturdays ago, and it was sponsored by Comcast Cares Day. Ten or eleven houses were painted, the Blanchard House Museum was painted, over 200 people came out to support that project, and it was a really nice day. Howard was out there painting on Hazel Street.
And Howard's wife was out there helping him.
Yes, Helen and Howard were both out there, and it was, it was a great project. If you didn't see the photos in the newspaper, you missed it somehow. It was a really, really nice project that, that happened with Team Punta Gorda, Comcast, Habitat for Humanity, and the city, and other sponsors, and the Deep Creek Church hosted the luncheon and put up a big tent, and they were, they were the host for all the volunteers. So, I'd just like to thank everybody who was involved with that. It was a great day and a great project for the CRA. And that's all I have. We are adjourned. Do we want a break?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to take a five-minute, five-minute break. It's 10:02. Okay. We will call the meeting back to order, and I'd like the record to reflect that all council members are present.
And city officers.
And city officers. We're all here.
Oh, good. Yay.
I never do that. I got in trouble with Karen. Okay, so that's done. Okay, next, we move on to the public hearing agenda. We have no public hearings, and we have no quasi-judicial public hearings. We do have two resolutions. First is GA 05-14.
This is actually a second reading of an ordinance, which, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 7, Building Regulations, Punta Gorda Code, Article 5, Flood Plane Management Code, to correct Scrivener's errors, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Any questions on this second reading? It's.
No.
Move approval of GA 05-14.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve GA 05-14. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Next is, in fact, a resolution, which I read by title only, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, supporting the extension of the 1% local government infrastructure sales surtax in Charlotte County, Florida, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing it an effective date.
In front of you is the resolution, and on the attachments, we have some changes to the Tier One projects. The Tier One projects are the, what the steering committee came up with over a six-year timeframe. We have been informed since that last council meeting that our US 41 Carmelita project, instead of a 50/50 grant, will be funded 100% by the state, the State Department of Transportation. So, that frees up $850,000. Now, it won't occur till about FY 2019, but at least it's moved into a different cat, funding category. In addition, we, we feel we need to move another $200,000 for the airport road, complete streets projects, put another $305,000 towards the Fisherman's Village connection to the Harbor Walk and Linear Park to make a full-blown effort there. Some additional funding towards the US 41 Bridges Underpass work. These are all estimates, by the way. When all is said and done on Tier One, we come up with about $230,000 that still is left unfunded, so that, that can be put towards the projects, whether they come in underbid or overbid or what.
And that's, I want to clarify, your estimates include project management. You've included those into those numbers now?
That's right.
So, we're not looking at that as a separate category anymore?
No.
Okay.
So, it would be easy if that's all we had to do today, but we have been informed that Charlotte County is very seriously going to consider, instead of a six-year program, an eight-year program. And the last two years will be for the Justice Center. So, because they're the leader of this, and we go by their lead, that means the city, if the voters approve it, if Charlotte County approves an eight-year program, and if the voters approve it, then that gives us another $4 million, roughly. And we've given you a type, a list of projects that the steering committee had in priority. They weren't funded, but they were, we just went right down the list, and everything from, they stay within the general categories that we've approved. We have a category called street lighting, we have a category called sidewalks, we have a category called Punta Gorda pathways, fleet and technology. We have those categories already designated, so some projects such as finishing the re-bricking along Taylor, around Caldwell Banker area where the old bricks are still there, we want to finish that. We have in there a second fire apparatus. We only funded one. Now, we're not talking the ladder truck, we're talking the fire apparatus. Energy improvements, instead of having to use the storm funds, that was on a Tier Two list anyways from the steering committee. Remember, we borrowed against the radio project.
Right.
Still going to have to do that. And some other complete streets, and we, we feel some more money should be put towards sidewalks. Now, these are the general categories. We also decided to put in there, or recommending, putting money in there to start the planning for a new waterfront activity center, because the boat club lease ends 2021. If we go to eight years, that's 2022, so we might as well start planning for it.
Can we start our discussion now?
Sure.
Okay. I'll just lead it off. I was on the committee, and some of these, I think, did come from some of our town hall meetings and some of our citizen input, which would be the historic district street lighting. We've heard some about that, how there are missed, there are areas in the, in the city that are missing the proper lighting, and so that, for me, would be a high priority. I like the idea of the waterfront activity center preliminary plan, put that on the burner for future. And I like the sidewalk projects. The one that I don't favor is Harbor Walk East, Adrian to Cooper, because right now, Harbor Walk East ends at Adrian Street, and there's a parking lot there, there's a terminus. I feel like if we extend it down to Cooper Street, that's going to be a dicey intersection for people to try to cross over 41 to get onto the Harbor Walk. Just, that's how I feel about it. Like, then we're going to have another situation with another intersection that we may have to, you know, luckily, we have 1.7 million coming from DOT for the Carmelita situation, and I feel like the Adrian to Cooper, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a nice, too. It's a little piece that people would like to see, but I would rather see the money go into the sidewalk improvement program all over the city. That impacts the entire city. I like the historic district street lighting. So, basically, on this list that you've given us, we need to get rid of $2 million, correct?
Potentially, yes.
On this page, it totals 6 million, and what we're saying is that with the two-year extension, it would be another 4 million worth of projects that could be in the plan. So, that's where I'm at, and then who would like to? Kim?
I'd like to talk a little bit about the waterfront activity center. We have, we received a letter from the Boaters Alliance, I think it was, from the boating group, about what they would like to see there, and so I'd just like to have a conversation about that. We did talk about the floating docks out there, Jay's right, they look like they're beat to death, and they are, because it really is, there is a lot of wave action out there. And I think that sits right in front of the estuary, so I don't know about putting attenuators out there, or how all that would work, because that's not my thing. But that center there, when I read that, I love that idea, I love the sailing there, I can envision kayaks out there, there are people now, we have that little basin, they go and they paddleboard out there, but I think that needs to be for our community, for our taxpayers. I'm not really in favor of putting a dayroom in there, putting showers and laundry facilities for transient boaters to come there, and that don't want to pay $15 at Fisherman's Village for all the services they could get there. I don't, I think Sarasota had a big problem with that, that it cost them a lot of money to get rid of that big problem, and I would like to see that activity center for our community, our children, our taxpayers.
I totally agree, totally.
Again, my take on that was not exactly in the same vein, but again, if we're talking about having identity as a vibrant waterfront community, that should be the highest thing on our list. I mean, what we're talking about is really building up the waterfront activity center.
Yep.
I do not have a problem. I think if we're going to attract, again, other people to learn about Punta Gorda, I think having an additional upland facilities is appropriate. I don't know about the problems that they had in Sarasota, so I think I would appreciate learning more about that. But I really do feel that a lot of our money, rather than energy improvements, that is a good idea, but we're, we've already planned for that. I mean, that's already in the plan in terms of getting reimbursement for that and how we're going to do that. Again, re-bricking, I understand, but again, I think, again, if we're focusing on our waterfront community, which we haven't done, we really haven't pushed that in terms of our list for our sales tax, and the other piece.
We have done, because we did the piece behind the Bayfront Center, we pushed that up, and we made that happen, so we have done some.
Oh, yeah. I, I'm, I don't want to say we haven't done anything. I apologize. But I, I'm also very concerned that the commission, the county commission is, wishes now to increase the timing to eight years. Looking at the data from the survey that was done, I'm not sure that eight years is going to fly particularly in Charlotte County. If they agree with the library in Punta Gorda, and if we push the waterfront activity center, I think we will have all of Punta Gorda behind us in terms of the, the timing of the eight years. I, but I really have some real concerns about them moving from six to eight years.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we want to take a position that is opposing the eight years, I don't know that if it's within our province to do that, I think we kind of have to go along with whatever the county decides.
Along that vein, if, if the Justice Center has to get done, I mean, if it's a project the county's got to pay for, we're going to pay either way, either through the 1%, or they're going to have to raise their taxes to, to fund the 30 million or whatever the dollar amount is to.
And I, and I don't disagree with that, I totally agree with that. The Justice Center needs to be, from what I've learned, it needs to be expanded, and that expansion will either come at the cost of tax dollars, or it will come as a result of the 1% sales tax being extended for the two years, and I think that's the most appropriate solution for that. I would support the eight years in order to accomplish that.
Nancy? I would agree with that. I discussed it with Commissioner Truex, and he was very adamant about that it needed to go to eight years, and I expressed to him that my concern, that, that I felt that citizens were, were warming up to the six years, and that our community had done a great job of putting forth good projects that they could support, but that eight years was really, from the data that was shown in the study, that I had concerns over that. I've had input from some citizens that are concerned, that people don't see the Justice Center as necessarily benefiting them directly, and so it's, it's not something that's, that's a part of their daily lives, when in fact, it does really, it does benefit us, but it's, it's not, it doesn't benefit us like the pathways and things that we're working on. So, it is a concern, but yet, as Tom expressed, it's really not our decision. So, we need to then, whatever they decide to do, then we have to put forth a solid list of projects that the community would embrace and support, and I think that the waterfront activity center is going to be one that is significant for the community. It's coming. I mean, it's, the decision time is coming. I, I don't necessarily agree, I think that I would like to learn more about Sarasota and the issues that you mentioned, Kim, because I've been supportive of some kind of upland facilities, and I would like to explore that more, is to see where can it go? And if there are really are issues, then we, we as a community need to be able to understand that and have the boaters understand the dilemma, so that we can all be a part of the solution and, and embracing whatever we have to do.
Thank you. So, do you want us to actually pare down this list today?
Well, there is one project that you could probably pare down pretty quickly and almost get there.
Yes, I see it.
Didn't, Vice Mayor, didn't you talk about the US 41 Multi-Use Recreational Trail Bridges?
Yes.
On the NPO list?
Yes.
And that's 1.6 million right there.
That needs to go. I mean, it's a functional trail right now. What they're talking about is, is taking the trail away from the highway and putting $1.6 million worth of bridges in those two short little sections.
That is important. I live down there, and I, and I've ridden on the highway on my bicycle, and I will tell you that it would be a whole lot safer if we didn't have to push people up onto the, the shoulder.
It, and has been now.
But if the NPO is going to pay for that, then why should we put it on our list?
Well, just understand, it's on our list, our Charlotte County Punta Gorda NPO list, it's going on the regional list, which is, goes with Sarasota, Manatee. Sarasota, Manatee, now, for this year, has the first opportunity to receive funding if funding is provided for that program. If they get funding this year, we are next in line for the following year, then for funding for that, and the bridges are the first thing that are on that list.
Okay.
But if it's, but it may be a couple more years, there may be no funding for that program. I just want to let you know that that's the case.
I think that the fact that it's on the list and that it's to be funded in a future date, that the residents would at least like to know that that's, we've listened, and it's on the list.
And wasn't that FDOT-funded, the MERTs? Yes, so it's, it would be the city going back and putting money into an FDOT project, which I would have some concern over, because, you know, it is.
Not necessary.
I would like to leave the Taylor Street re-bricking on there, because I know I've, I've met with business owners who've pointed out all of the, the problems with the bricking, what's there, and, and the various levels, and people that have tripped and fallen there, so I think some, we do need to do some addressing issues.
Well, if you took off the MERT bridges and you took off Harbor Walk East, Adrian to Cooper, you're there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
You're there.
Does anybody feeling?
No, I'm okay with that, too, but I would like to comment again about the waterfront center, if I could have that opportunity. I, I'm in pretty much agreement with, with Kim. I think it's a project that we have to plan very, very carefully. I would be very concerned about over-commercializing that area. I mean, it's just, it's, it's an area that is, it's just so essential to the fabric and the being of who we are in that waterfront, that we, we have to carefully consider it. We, well, you know, what we do there, we're looking at, talking about putting up, what do you, the water.
Attenuation.
Attenuators and out there in the marina, and attenuators down there, and maybe that waterfront is just not conducive to having a lot of boats out there because of the wave action. You know, we all have this vision of a lot of sailboats being an anchor out there or being in a mooring out there. We just have to react to how it's happening. I think we just have to give a lot of consideration to the planning on these two buildings or the one building, or whatever comes out of there, and make it more appropriate. I don't want to give up the sailing for the kids or the community, I think that we need to, it's a waterfront center, and we need to expand its use in an appropriate fashion for our community.
And I, I agree with you, and my, even back when the, the other dayroom proposal came forward, my, as a mother, raising children here and knowing a lot of children in this community, it just really worried me that these facilities are right next to the playground. I mean, we just have to think, like you're saying, about our entire community, and, and, you know, what types of people would be, we would be attracting there. So, I think that is a definite future conversation when this, you know, waterfront activity plan gets put together.
Mm-hmm. Carolyn?
I just have another one. The Complete Streets Airport to Carmelita, I believe that's also within the NPO's listing. I'd have to go back and check on that.
Ooh, that would be good. Yeah. Let's give, let's give half of these to the.
Well, what I, I guess my idea would be to add more money to the waterfront activity center to.
Which is great.
To start, to start that sooner. I mean, the planning is going to take a significant amount of time, whether or not we have a, the lease, you know, on that property, and I would anticipate that the members of the boat club would be very, very pleased to see that upgraded, because it would be for their use as well, so.
I think whatever we can, the NPO then funds, that we can take off of this and put toward the waterfront activity center, perfect.
I would agree with that.
I agree with that.
So, do you want it off the list now?
No. Do we? I don't.
Take which one?
The Complete Streets, not until we know.
Not until we know for sure.
Okay. But we can move it around.
Right.
We have, we have the categories, and we have projects.
Right.
Money can be moved around as we move along.
And if the 1% sales tax is actually approved.
Yes.
So, I hope we're not doing, you know, spinning our wheels.
Right.
So, that staff doesn't have to spend too much time to understand what was happening up in Sarasota, in a nutshell. Instead of transient boaters, you know, coming into the community and, and going as tourists, it really attracted more permanent residents with boats that were marginally seaworthy, and that's why the city moved towards a regulated mooring field, so that they could ensure that it didn't basically turn into a slum on water, and that's, that's something I'm sure you would want to avoid.
And it did, for a while.
Yeah, I moved onto my boat at the marina about the time that the newspaper made a big story about that. My mom was convinced that that's where I was going to be.
Well, it's good lessons learned, and we need, and I, I agree with you about having the kids, we don't have enough things for the youth, and to have something where the kids can really get out there after school, do things, and that aren't necessarily on their computers, that would be awesome.
Kim?
And that's my point. I would love to see that whole park, that area, I mean, you know, we're going to have a new playground for the children, have an area for them that they can really play outside. I mean, it was where the old Boy Scouts used to be. That was there, it's always been in this community for the kids, and I think that, I know Patty has a system at Fisherman's Village that when they come in there, you know, they have to, they get kind of a little background check anyway about who they are, and, you know, just making sure that people of good character are hanging out at Fisherman's Village.
And amazingly, she let me in one of them.
Yeah. Well, everybody, no. But, you know, I mean, we just need to create, I would like to create a safe environment for the kids to be able to play outside. I mean, we have people who want more pickleball, and, and then we have more volleyball, and I mean, that's a big, huge piece of land there, Gilchrist Park, and it should be for our citizens here, our taxpayers.
Well, then, do I have, do I have some consensus here to take off the bridges, which is 1.6 million, and Adrian to Cooper, which is 465, and we're pretty much there?
Yes.
Again, it's a tentative list. Are we there?
Yes.
Okay. Then, there you go.
And pretty much all of the other projects fall within our established categories that we had already.
Yes, they do.
So, we're not expanding categories.
Nope, they're in the categories.
What, what about the energy component? I mean, we've already identified that that is going to pay for itself over a period of time. I mean, do we really need to put the $500,000 toward that?
Good question.
It keeps coming back, so Howard.
The reason it keeps coming back is, remember, we are borrowing against a project.
So, you're wanting to repay that project?
We wanted to repay it in case the storm funds cannot, we cannot use the storm funds, because we're still going through that FEMA audit.
Okay.
That, it's a placeholder.
It can stay on the list, then.
It's a placeholder.
Even if we don't need it, then we can move money around later.
Thank you, Howard, for being conservative. I appreciate that.
I do.
Okay, next week.
So, then, don't we have to approve this resolution?
Do we need to? Yes, we need to vote on the resolution.
To send.
Yes.
Move approval of the resolution to support the extension of the 1% local government infrastructure sales surtax in Charlotte County.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Madam Mayor. With this resolution, I would like for this to be recognized and promoted, then, to our citizens that this entire council supports the 1% sales tax, so that there's no confusion in our residents' minds, as there had been, I guess, in the previous year.
Even for the eight years.
Pardon?
For the eight years.
Forty-eight years.
And I would certainly agree with that, a good point.
Thank you.
That will become evident when finance presents the capital approval.
Okay, next, we have the consent agenda, and it's a very lengthy consent agenda, and first, I will ask for any items to be pulled.
I wanted to pull 4E1.
4E1, event permit, Charlotte County Historical Society, 10th Annual Hibiscus Festival, pull that.
And I'd like to pull 4E3.
Okay, and then 4E3.
Did you just want to make a comment?
Yeah, just to make a comment, Tom.
Okay, we'll do that after we, the citizens' comments.
I would like to just make a comment on, I, the resolution of the City of Punta Gorda with regarding to MAC Committee.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's, um, let's pull 4E1 totally, and then we're going to open it for citizens' comments, and then you can make your comments, and then we'll handle the agenda items. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, so now we have citizens' comments on consent agenda items only. We pulled your items, so.
So, wait until that.
Is that appropriate? Just he's here to speak on 4E1?
No, he speaks on it now.
Okay, speak on it now. Sorry.
Good morning. Michael Haymans. I'm here on behalf of the Charlotte County Historical Society and the group of citizens that are putting on the Hibiscus Festival, that's the 16th, 17th, and 18th of May. It's in Gilchrist Park, and it's a, it's the more appropriate park. We tried Lashley Park, and it was too big, we sort of rumbled around in it, it was too far distant from, from the secret gardens that we do. A lot of people can walk to those, although we have a trolley, there's a lot of walking that goes on with it. And what, and with, but with Gilchrist Park, with the way that the condition it's in right now, there's going to be some cleaning up. As a matter of fact, I met with Mark Garing and with Steve Paget yesterday to see how that was going to be cleaned up and what we could use and wouldn't be usable. The sidewalk area, the question before you today is, can we close the sidewalk off for our event? The sidewalk's already compromised back there on, on the back, the River Walk, because that's where the, the discharge place for the, the de-watering is occurring. They're all, we're trying to have this festival, and it's really on a shoestring. It's the, it barely ever makes, it just barely covers its costs. We have a $1 donation at the door to try to, to cover our costs. We have some vendor fees that, that go, but those are pretty much set amount, but we, and we have music that goes the whole time from Friday night until Sunday afternoon, and so we'd love to be able to, to close off the, send people around. It's already on a compromised park area, it allows us some control, and it's only a dollar to get in, and we, in the past, when we haven't been able to close it off, we've had, we've asked people, you know, would you give us a dollar? And they go, no, this is my park, and I'm, you know, and so there's some passionate people out there that if we don't have the ability to say, no, really and truly, you've got to give us a dollar to come in, then they're, they just won't, and they'll come in, and they'll do whatever, and, and this good cause will have suffered from it. Mark Garing supports us in our request to, to. Mark Garing supports us in our request to, to close the park to the foot traffic for those time periods. That would be Friday from 6 until, until 10 in the evening, Saturday, 9 until 4, and Sunday, 10 until 2.
So those specified times are the only times?
That's correct.
That you would have the fence up?
That's correct.
Not allowing the people to traverse through the sidewalk?
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
What, for those time periods, once again?
That's Friday evening, 6:00 PM until 10. Great lineup. You need to come for the music for that. You'd enjoy it. The, from 9 until 4 on Saturday, and then from 10 until 2 on Sunday.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, citizens' comments, consent agenda items only. Okay, seeing none, we'll take the comments on the other items that we didn't pull. Does that make sense?
You go first.
The item 4E3, the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant Request. And I just wanted to comment that I think it is wonderful that $25,000 grant is going to be provided to identify the arts activities that are going on in Pontegorroda. I think, I mean, this is something that we didn't even ask for, and it's being presented. And I just wanted to thank the powers-to-be for this wonderful opportunity to identify the arts activities that are going on in our community, which I think is really needed, both in Charlotte County and Pontegorroda.
And I will have a comment later concerning arts and my policy and legislation, kind of piggybacking on that same idea. So when we get there, I'll let you know. Tom?
Sure. Under F1, under the, I would just like to compliment staff for their efforts in securing the funding from MAC for the dredging of Ponce and the, the motor for the police boat. I just think that they've done a fabulous job, and I just wanted to acknowledge their efforts and also to acknowledge the efforts of Herman Novak, who is heading up our, our coys up there at MAC, and thank them for it.
Great job.
Wonderful.
Okay, so any other comments on agenda items? If not on 4E1?
Yeah, I'll just comment on what Carolyn commented on. It was a, we were identified as a very responsive governmental organization, and it is why we were asked if we would be the lead on this and be the, for the grant to go through. And I know that the Regional Planning Council has not always been on the ball in asking for these things in a timely manner, but this time they are. And we were able to participate, and it's great that our city's able to take the lead on it.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Move approval of consent agenda?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda without 4E1. Karen's mouth is...
It's the remainder of the consent.
The remainder of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, so now 4E1.
She's getting a little hard on us, isn't she?
How many rules?
I actually just wanted to pull it for that reason, because I know I'll have a lot of people asking me about the time of closing the park and closing the walkway and, and, you know, why are we doing that? Because we have a lot of people that are out there walking and...
And I was going to want to pull that item too, probably primarily because I don't think we should close the sidewalk. There are people that use that park all the time, and I guess I was thinking that if you put the fence on the, just on the inside of that sidewalk, so they could still use the sidewalk.
That's what I was wondering too, if we could.
Because that way, they can, this whole area here, they can walk, they can see what's going on, and they can say, oh, well, I can go. And I think that would be a more inclusive way or a way to attract people to go to the Hibiscus Festival than putting up barriers in which irritates people, and then they just leave.
They do have the bar and the gazebo, though, I know. So then, how would the people get over to that? It's the only challenge that I see, anyway, there might be.
Lisa, have you also talked to them about putting up detour signage for access?
Lisa, hand and zoning coordinator, for the record, yes, the event organizer is aware that they are supposed to put up detour signs with ADA accessible routes from the park to the other side of Reta. Again, we, with the compromising of the sidewalk between the two shelters, it's pretty well gravel right there. It's a little tough to traverse right now until that is, that final portion where they punch through the seawall, if I'm not mistaken. Mark was at DRC in favor of them closing that section of the sidewalk. The reason this did come to you, we do allow the closing of Harbor Walk in Lashley Park for exclusive events and events that only charge $3 admission. But they are required to put detour signs around. We do allow them to do it in Lashley Park. People do get irritated and annoyed as well with that. We do get emails from that. But it is in the event manual where staff can't approve that because that's part of the event manual. This is really the first time an event has come to us in Gilcrest to close the sidewalk. So that's why we brought it to, to you for approval or denial.
If I may, this right here, between the, this pavilion and the bathroom pavilion, that's the area that is going to be blocked off because that's where the discharge is. And so, this sidewalk is already compromised. They can't cross there. They already have to find a way to come down onto the driveway, down into the event, really, is what it turns out, and come here, and then they can't get back out until they... So it, it, it's not that they can go past and, and be enticed to come in. They are, if they use the sidewalk, they are dumped right down into the event. And so, now we have no control whatsoever as to who comes and goes into the event. And if for no other reason than it's, this year's in a, is a disturbed site, we would ask that you give consideration to that and let us close it. You know, other, other years, maybe there's other solutions, but, but this year in particular, because of the compromised site, it makes some better sense.
Nancy?
I think if we were to go a little bit further off to the right of this, if you can move that a little bit. It shows an entrance down there. I don't have a problem with us closing the sidewalk as long as we provide signage and a good detour for people because we invest a lot of money in people, they are heavily used. My concern is coming around the hotel, and they come down the Harbor Walk. And I was out there looking and trying to see, well, how would cyclists or pedestrians be able to, where do they have to go? Because otherwise, the sidewalk takes them all the way around, past the banyan tree over, and it takes them away from...
And I think...
I'm just concerned about...
I think that where this connects right here is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
It makes sense, it makes sense to maybe to block it here and to keep that portion of the sidewalk off so they can come back down to the road, and then we can send them down here.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Yes. That makes good sense, is to leave this portion of the sidewalk out so that that connects. Yeah, that makes lots of sense.
Mike, would you just describe that verbally for the court?
The, where the intersection of the sidewalk that comes from Reta and the banyan tree toward the harbor, where that intersects with the portion that comes from behind the waterfront motel, that would be the cutoff point on the sidewalk so that the traveling public on the Harbor Walk itself, as they come around the hotel, could come on down to Reta.
And use the sidewalk. And use the sidewalk.
That seems reasonable to me, and I did not know that the sidewalk was that compromised in that area. And I think you've specified the times that you will be blocking the sidewalk for a 10th anniversary event, like he said, as a shoestring type of, and it's really in the off-season. And that's what we've been wanting, is to keep things going after maybe the season that we consider is over. So I'm in favor of it. Tom?
Nancy, thanks for bringing that to our attention. It's good. I would like for us to take a look at the, at the closing down of Harbor Walks. We don't need to do it today, but we typically close them down at these events, and I, there's a, there's a lot of griping that goes on with that. Maybe we can look into it and find a, find a better way.
Well, you've got, I don't want to get into a lengthy discussion, but you've got three or four events in Lashley Park that charge to get in, some of it considerable. And that's why they're closed down.
Well, can't the snow fencing be, be brought on the other side of, of the walk? And where they, they don't put snow fencing there? They can, they could put snow fencing there.
Sure, very easily. The issue there, the issue there is, then somebody could just stand on the other side of the fencing, see the whole concert for nothing.
Yeah.
And it's happened.
I've had multiple conversations with, with John Wright about this, and I understand the issues, and I understand we have people that complain, and, and so, maybe it's a, how do we, as an organization, address notifying people, putting it out there that the Harbor Walk will be, won't be open for these periods of time well in advance so that it's publicized information?
We can try, but those...
And I don't know if that's the answer or not.
More signage?
What?
No, 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 more signage.
Well, they do, I think that, Howard, you did say that the event organizers have to put signs out where the detour signs.
The detour signs, yes.
But it's also letting people know in advance if it's possible. Maybe that's the answer, a part of it. I don't...
Lisa?
It is in the event manual and application. It is the responsibility of the event organizer to do public service announcements and put the detour signs up a minimum of 24 hours in advance of the closure of Harbor Walk. And I do believe that they do put the public service announcements in the paper and on the radio, and I always try to make sure that they are at least two weeks in advance in the weekly highlights and on the festivals page.
And I think the impact of these events on, on the public overwhelmingly exceeds the number of complaints that we get for, you know, for these great, robust events that we have, that really, they contribute to our economy. Without them, we would not have the vibrant downtown that we have. So, I mean, I think that, you know, Lisa and her staff handles it, and when there are issues, they, they address them, and, and we will have those couple of people that will have a problem with it. But, you know, if, if we want to continue as a festival city and have events and, and a robust downtown, we can't keep everybody happy.
We do. That's what we want. That's what we want. I would like for us to make sure that we somehow are able to notify people. I realize it's the responsibility of the event organizers, but if we know in advance, and I know that they book these events well in advance, that somehow then we can put on a list of Harbor Walk closings for this event, kind of thing.
Maybe at Gilcrest, in that, where they have the reservations, maybe you could put on that paper that's in there, just put, park will be closed these dates and times. I mean, there is kind of a venue right there. There's already that little kiosk where the reservations get posted. I mean, that's something. Maybe they could put that up, you know, here shortly so that it is out there for people to see.
We, we do post the parks for regular rentals, and the events go on those when, when there's an event for that weekend, and we put what portion of the park they're using and if it's, if it is exclusive use and if they are closing the sidewalks. Especially at Gilcrest, we'll put exclusive use, including Harbor Walk. So, we can do that. That's not a problem.
Thank you. Okay.
And it's a, you know, we want that. We want more events to come. I mean, that's not, so. I mean, I just wanted to know what the hours were. The Hibiscus Festival is a wonderful event. I mean, wonderful, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Ginnis.
Everybody head on down and have a good time.
Okay, 4E1.
Move approval of 4E1.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve 4E1. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, carried unanimously. That takes care of the consent agenda.
As Finance Department is getting set up, we're going to present the 2015 to 2019 five-year Capital Improvements Program Vehicle and Replacement Plan. We are not going to be showing individual sheets. All we're going to do is show the five-year chart for each category. We do have other charts in there that show sales tax projects and things like that, but I don't, we don't need to get into that. Because the first, the very first chart that we're going to show is the most important chart we need to detail to the public.
Yes, before we get to that, and Sharon's getting set up, we have something to do before that, which is citizens' comments on regular agenda items only, which would be the budget, unfinished business, new business. So if you have comments on regular agenda items only, please come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Mayor, while they're coming forward, if I could just announce that for those that have difficulty reading small numbers on the screen, there are packets that we set in the back with the five-year CIP. You're welcome to take one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. This is actually item four.
State your name, please.
Salvatore Castronovo, 261545, that's Allen Drive, Pontegorroda. I guess this is actually under recommendation of city officers. It's under the regular agenda. With regard to the RO plant, I believe you should stop engineering on that. You got it to the 30% point until such time as you have funding for that project. Yet, I don't believe you should spend another penny on it until you can prove that you can build it. Going along with that, you have a variance right now for total dissolved solids. I don't think you should wait till 2016 when it expires. You should get moving right now and get that approved, just in case this plant does not get built, so that you have, you know, you have approval to have the variance on the total dissolved solids. I think you should consider building that connector that was discussed by Swift Mud and purchasing your water from that water district. Instead of building this RO plant, which is going to become a maintenance item for you, you can also, with that water, you can dilute your water and meet the total dissolved solids requirement. And if you should decide to go ahead with the RO project, you need to let the people know actually what it's going to cost them, that their water rates are going to go up. So with that, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments on regular agenda items only? Please come to the podium, state your name.
Steve Fabian, I'm a member of the utility board, and I just want to make one thing. I don't think people understand, the interconnect is not going to solve our problem. Blending that water is not going to solve the problem.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes. Yes, he did. 1.7 minutes at this point.
1.7, okay. I do not know what that individual understands about, about engineering or about chemistry.
Okay, this is on agenda items, so speak to the agenda.
This is on the agenda items, on the agenda item. If you have a container with so much total dissolved solids and you put water in that doesn't have it in it, it reduces it. I mean, that's just a matter of fact.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments on regular agenda items only? Okay, seeing none, now we will move into the fiscal year 2015 to 2019 Capital Improvement Program and Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Plans.
Sharon Nippenberg, Controller. Good morning, everyone. This is another phase of our budgeting process, that we're providing opportunity for public input and transparency as to what the city council is determining will be the five-year Capital Improvement Program of the city. If you'll recall, we began this whole process in January with a long-range plan. Then we moved into identifying and upgrading our financial policies, and then we went on to reviewing the actual operating budget for the general fund. Now we are discussing the Capital Improvement Program of the entire city with the exception of the utilities fund. That one we are going to reserve for a meeting in June, and at that time, we hope we will have better information to bring you. So all others will be discussed today. I will bring them to you at an overview summary format. All the detailed projects are up on the city's website, project by project, showing the costs, the breakdowns, whether they're just planning numbers, engineering estimate numbers. At this point, very few of those projects would actually be bid numbers, so they are all subject to some change. With that, we'll move into the various categories. The first one is the General Construction Fund. What we need to understand about that fund is if we take all the individual funds that take care of their own projects, like utilities, like sanitation, we are left with the general construction of the city that is funded either by the general fund itself or by grants or by special revenues, such as the ones you discussed this morning, the 1% sales tax. So we are going to move into the actual identification of those projects now. Kristin, if we can go. So the revenue sources that we're looking at for this, as you can see, in 2015, we're s... still at a level of $1,025,000. That is because we still have some current 1% sales tax left from the original first six-year program, left to spend. As you move out into 16 through 19, you'll see that the program drops down to $200,000, $188,000. In 19, you do see it bounce back up because we do have a planned MPO grant out in 2019. So the funding sources for general construction are very, very limited. And if that is the only source of revenue we have, is the general fund and occasional grants and some small impact fees coming in from growth, we cannot have an aggressive capital improvement program. And I think that's why the city manager wanted to discuss the 1% sales tax renewal with you first, before we moved into this discussion. So the capital project program that you see here is what we do know we do have funds for. Kristin, if we can move over to the actual list itself. And I apologize for the audience, I know you probably can't read those numbers, there is a handout over there for you. But these are the normal reoccurring expenses. That whole first section comes primarily from the public works department. These are drainage projects. No, they're not glamorous, but they are absolutely essential to the welfare of the city and we have attempted to continue funding them. They have been stripped back and for those of you that are newer to the budgeting process should be aware, that we used to fund $75,000 every year for storm sewer and $75,000 every year for drainage. Well, we had to flip that and do every other year for each of them in order to stretch the dollars coming from the general fund. So as you see the general fund recovering in the economic situation, you'll want to look at this again and reevaluate it and go back, hopefully, to the way we used to fund. This is, at this point, inadequate level of funding. We're doing the best we can, but you'll see that we have a big project sitting over in the 1% sales tax. We have a major drainage area that needs to be addressed and clearly the general fund cannot handle it. Moving on, we have some grant funding, some park impacts. As you recall, we did have consultants come in and relook at our fair share impacts and what they should be attributed to. As a result of that, the formulas changed. The transportation impacts are now what I would call minimal. We used to fund a rather aggressive sidewalk program with this and now, as you can see, at $30,000 a year, we cannot do that, or $33,000. The damage recovery fund is up there and as the city manager explained to you, that is a backup plan. Those funds are not necessarily available. It's placeholder money. It's all pending results of FEMA audits, which will be coming up hopefully in the next year. We're working towards getting them focused on Punta Gorda and getting them in to finish up Hurricane Charlie. And then the current 1% sales tax, those are the remaining projects from the original six-year plan. If there's no questions on those, we can move on.
The point we're trying to make is, without the 1% local option sales tax, we're done. Unless we look towards property taxes or we find some grant out there, all those projects we talked about earlier will not get done.
I have a question. On Cordo, Andre, Boca ground drainage, that is on our list for the local option sales tax, correct?
Yes.
The total amount or would this amount still stay on the CIP?
Well, that's so minimal.
That's the small portion that we're funding right now to begin the design work.
So that could be revised if we did the whole thing. But all we're doing is, we're doing some improvements in there with our staff right now. It's making, making some headway, but we've got a lot to do.
Okay, so that could be revised?
Could be.
Could be. Questions for Howard, Sharon?
Just, Sharon, the sidewalk improvements of $33,000 per year, did you say that that is insufficient? Is that what I heard?
It's inadequate for the plan that we need. As you can see from the ISS, the 1% sales tax list, there are more needs than can be met with the $33,000. So what the current proposal is, is to use this $33,000 in conjunction with what's been requested in the 1% sales tax to meet the needs of our 10-year plan for sidewalk, both renewal and improvement.
Carolyn?
The funding that we receive for the sidewalks, that's transportation impact. So what we're saying is that the gas tax is, we're receiving less tax revenue. Is that correct?
The, in the path, well, we, yes, our gas taxes are going down, however, that we reserve for the roads themselves.
Okay, so this money is coming from?
This is coming, when someone takes, pulls a permit to build a new structure, they pay fair share impact fees.
And that, part of that is the transportation impact?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the other part is the park impacts. And what was reflected there is for their new access to our community, they are putting a burden on our service levels and they are expected to cover their share of the burden right up front.
Right, thank you.
Do we have any additional information on the radio system from the county? Has there been any recent discussions about timing of that or?
Still planned for FY 2015?
Okay.
Haven't heard otherwise.
Other questions? Do you need any action? I mean...
No, because that's the point we were trying to make. I think it's well documented.
Point well made.
And this next chart just shows the sales tax. We already talked about this, so.
So then in terms of planning our budget, if we cannot fund these initiatives, what we're looking at then in October, basically we'll have to wait till the November election to determine whether or not we can continue then to have any kinds of activities.
Yes.
And at that point, we may need to just put on the brakes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Through this budget process, we're trying to identify for you, Kristin, if you could just go back to the first one, we're trying to identify for you, these are, in the level one up there, are necessary regardless of what occurs with the 1% sales tax. That funding that is coming directly from your general fund into here and will be funded.
And it's already in the budget?
It is in the budget document that you've been looking at, yes.
And in the absence of the 1% sales tax, that is where it should be coming from.
These will absolutely continue.
Yes.
Yes. Now, when we get to the fleet discussion, keep in mind that the opposite is true. They are not in the general fund budget right now. If we don't get the 1% sales tax, we will have to reevaluate what we do about those replacements. Lot of reprioritizing may occur. Okay. The second list, Kristin, if we can just move on, this is your 1% sales tax, tier one, tier two. They're in the document, yes, you've already had the discussion of them, but I wanted you to see how the whole big picture moves through the budget process. So yes, they're unfunded. Does it mean they should stay unfunded? Not necessarily. That's a council decision. You've identified these projects as important to meeting the strategic priorities of this city. Your number one desire is to fund them from 1% sales tax. If that does not occur, the projects are still valid and you can begin discussing alternative funding methods. Moving on.
Excuse me, Sharon, do we have a copy of this?
Yes, you do. In your, in your packet from the agenda, it looked a little bit different, but it's the exact same list. And it was the, there were three attachments to your agenda and it was, the second attachment was the sales tax tier one, tier two. The third attachment was the vehicles. The first attachment was the, just the small...
We can resend you this, Paul.
Oh, absolutely.
I'd like to see this in this format.
It's in here.
We can...
Okay.
It's in that packet.
Is there anything, Mayor, that you would like to discuss on tier two and move on?
No, because I think we just, we just had this discussion, so...
That's fine.
In fact, yeah, you might need to update some of the numbers.
The only emphasis on that page where there were two grants on that page as well that we're hoping to get. The final section of the discussion for today is not what we call capital improvement programs, because those are much larger type projects, but actually vehicle and equipment repair and replacement, as you know, this has been a discussion item this second year now, as a funding that we currently are inadequate in providing and we've been discussing whether it should be a financial policy amendment to identify how to deal with this. The current identification process has been to use the remainder of our 1% local sales tax to fund this. So Kristin, if we can move into the actual identification of this. So if you look at fiscal year 2015...